I know you guys all need training too. So we figured we'll do this right here in our little town. We don't have to drive, we don't have to pay anybody, and now we're in good shape. So Bob Summers is the head of the Agricultural Protection Unit up at Ag and Markets. He's the guy if you have questions, issues about, let's say, some zoning laws, things like that, how they're working with agriculture, if some conflicts come up. He's the guy you call and he's always there to help you out. He answers his own phone and he's been tremendously helpful to me. He's going to discuss tonight specifically, he's read our zoning law in the town of Rhinebeck, how it works with agriculture, how it doesn't work with agriculture, basically how we can try to make sure that the conflicts that do come up can be resolved to the satisfaction of all parties. Agriculture is very important in our community. It's growing, which I think surprises some people. It's not the old traditional type, we had large farms, dairy, things like that. There's a lot of smaller farms doing more specialty crops, things like that, sometimes in residential areas which can create conflicts. And there are ways to solve it, and I know we want agriculture to thrive in Rhinebeck. And I think Dr. Summers' presentation should be very helpful. So I'm going to turn it over to him. I think we'll have questions at the end or something like that. So this is for us to figure out exactly how we can best deal with agriculture to the benefit of all of our communities. So without further ado.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael. Since you're sitting, most people are sitting in hard seats. You know, if you need to get up and walk around, go ahead. Hate to talk to your back up here, but I have to control this computer. Well, my morning started at 3:30. My wife's a professor at Hudson Valley Community College. Grades were due at 10 o'clock this morning, so I was up crunching numbers for her as she was grading labs and things. Then I went to, took off at 7:10 this morning, went to Orange County, went to a farm there. The farm is putting fill on the property and they're trying to expand their horse boarding operation. They raise dressage horses and I guess they're second in the nation for that type of animal and for training. So my concern was, when I looked at it, DEC had been out there about three separate times, told them that there weren't any issues. And I just wanted to warn him that he was placing fill in seven acres of a hundred-year floodplain and that it's in an MS4 district and anything over an acre requires stormwater and erosion control. And DEC never mentioned that to him. So I told him he better hurry up and finish the project before the town knew what was going on. Then I stopped at another farm about an hour away from his. And in that particular town, it was, I think it's more of a personality issue. And the town is not providing permits to the individual farm. There are a few things that could be suspect as far as the buildings that are under construction, but under a stop work order. And those are the types of things that we deal with. And the Agriculture and Markets Law looks at those issues. And really what we tried to do is arbitrate and we try and talk to the municipality and the farmer, try and find a compromise. But if a compromise cannot be found, the commissioner has a stick and we'll talk about that in that review. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about the Agriculture and Markets Law. And I also went through the town of Rhinebeck's zoning code. And I have some issues up here to talk about the code and how it may impact ag operations in an agricultural district. But it's really, it's a constitutional amendment. Back in the late 60s, there was a fear that we were losing our best farms to non-farm development. And there was a national effort. And because of that national effort, and particularly with American Farmland Trust, the state worked with Cornell University to develop the first ever agricultural districts program. So it's a comprehensive program to meet the constitutional provision that says that agriculture is a preferred use in the state, that the state is going to take action to preserve and protect its agricultural resource base. The Agricultural Districts Law came into effect in 1971. And in 1972, the first district was formed in Schohary County. And actually, our current commissioner, Richard Ball, his farm is in the first ever agricultural district. And he has a very nice flat bottom floodplain farm, 18 feet of topsoil on his property, and a really popular farm market called the Carrot Barn. So he's very engaged. He knows what agriculture is and he's an advocate for agriculture throughout the state. He's not a bureaucrat, which I really like working for him because of that reason. I know it's being taped, I'm going to send him that. Anyway, the counties have a farmland protection board. And these are individuals that are appointed by the county executive. And there are some members that are on the board because of their job position and title. But it's a board that provides comments to the county legislature as they try and look at agricultural issues within the county. And they're our eyes and ears for agriculture within the county. So anytime we issue a letter or we have something come before us, we notify the chair of the farmland protection board. Most boards meet monthly and we look for their input on anything that we do. How do you get into an agricultural district? There are currently 210 agricultural districts. When I came to New York 24 years ago from South Carolina, there were, that's why I talk slow, it's not age-related, but you know, sometimes they say from the brain to the mouth, you know, as you get older. But this is a really thoughtful process that us southern people have. You know, we can't talk real fast. But anyway, under the Agricultural Districts Law, you can add land to a district every year annually. But every eight years, the whole district comes up for review. So on the annual basis, Dutchess County Legislature has designated a 30-day period. I think it's in April, but I'm not positive. I think it is April. But anyway, that 30-day period, any farmer that has land that's not located in an agricultural district will petition the county legislature through the farmland protection board and ask that their property be included in the agricultural district. Then there's a series of processes that occur. Once the applications are collected, a lot of counties will go out and do a farm review. They'll make sure that it's viable farmland. And viable farmland means that it meets the definition of farm operation under the Agriculture and Markets Law. Then they make a recommendation or a set of recommendations to the county legislative body. The county legislative body holds a public hearing. They notify the municipalities involved that a public hearing is going to occur and they solicit comments. So after the public hearing, the county legislature will determine which properties they're going to add or not add to the district on an annual basis. Then that district, every eight years, is reviewed. So there's an anniversary date depending upon when the district was created. And every eight years thereafter, the districts are reviewed and the same process occurs. But in this particular instance, you can remove land from the agricultural district. So you can only remove land every eight years, but you can add land every year. So local governments are involved. And it's very important, once you receive that notification, that you look to see which properties are being added to the district or removed from the district. And it's incumbent upon you as individuals to make yourself known and your thoughts known from a planning board, zoning board, or town board, or village perspective, whether or not this is a good fit, whether it furthers the agricultural districting process, whether or not there are zoning issues involved, anything that you want the legislature to know prior to voting on adding or removing land from the district. Well, every year, ag districts, the number of acres in the agricultural district continues to increase. We're almost up to nine million acres across the state in the ag districts. On 25,300 farms, the number of farms are decreasing, but the acreage is increasing. A lot of that has to do with large dairy operations needing more land to spread manure, bringing land back into agricultural production, land that used to be farmed 20, 30, 50, 60 years ago, removing the trees and putting that back into ag production. So we are seeing land being added to the districts. This is really important. I'm a member of the town planning board where I live in Washington County, the town of White Creek. I was on the county planning board for a number of years, but I thought I would be with my wife one additional night out of the month. And so I left the county board. But we all know that municipalities are responsible for zoning and planning. There's home rule authority in the state. And the Agricultural Districts Law acknowledges home rule, but it also protects farm operations. And I've set this up so we can look at what is the role of agriculture and markets and what is the role of the municipalities on several examples that I have in the presentation. The thing that we hear constantly, it doesn't make any difference where you are, downstate, upstate, that I'm a farm operation, I'm in an agricultural district, I don't need a permit, I'm exempt from everything. And that's not true. All farmers have to follow local zoning. That's a requirement. So if local zoning does not provide an exemption, then they have to abide by all laws. They have to obtain permits from the municipality unless the municipality says agricultural structures are exempt from the permitting process. What happens with farm operations in an agricultural district, if they feel that a local law is unreasonably restrictive or the enforcement of that law is unreasonable, instead of having themselves take an Article 78 action against the municipality, they can contact Ag and Markets for a review. And that's basically what I do day in and day out, is review local laws, how they affect farm operations that we're reviewing in particular, and what is reasonable, what is not reasonable, and what can we do to find a compromise. The agricultural districts that cover, district that covers Rhinebeck is Ag District Number 20. There's quite a bit of land, I don't know what the percentage is, but in the purple, you kind of know what the boundaries of Rhinebeck is and boundaries are. That's something that affects all those properties in the agricultural district. And any given day or year, they could contact the department and request a review. The municipality can contact the department and request a review as well. So I went and I looked at the zoning districts in the town of Rhinebeck. Where you have a farm market, that's a special use permit with site plan review. On its face, the department has determined in most instances that special use permits are unreasonably restrictive on its face because farming in an agricultural district is not a special use. But there are exceptions. There are some municipalities that don't have site plan review, but they have special use. So we've agreed that that's acceptable. Where you have farm marketing, where you have the public coming into a facility, where you're expanding that facility to encourage people to come to the farm, like an orchard, a UPEC operation, a large pumpkin operation, Halloween rides and events, those are things where a special events permit or a special use permit, along with expedited site plan review, we found to be acceptable. In Rhinebeck, the farm market is very expansive and liberal. I was quite pleased to see everything that a farm market can accomplish under the zoning law. And the town should be commended on that. There is a lot more in that law that the town allows that we would not be able to protect under the definition of farm market. Roadside stand, an expedited site plan review, we would agree with something like that and that's consistent with the zoning code. It's a very small facility, it can only be 200 square feet, but they can also, an individual can also request an area variance through the ZBA. So we could look at that. Public stable, those are farm operations, they're not really special uses. Equine operations, hack facilities, riding academies. The legislature has expanded that segment of the agricultural industry so that it is now part of the definition of farm operation. So we would tend to look at some of that being a special use permit and site plan review as, well, special use permit is being unreasonably restrictive, not so much site plan review. Definitions, I found the definitions for Rhinebeck to be very comprehensive. This is probably the most important part of the zoning code. You need good definitions to provide guidance to the ZBA and the planning board as they're making their decisions. When I looked at this, this is just alphabetical and that's the only reason it's in this order. But accessory structures, it says that it has to be located on where, same lot where there's a principal structure. And a lot of farm operations have multiple parcels. They have barns on lots that do not contain a primary structure. And this includes greenhouses, generators, solar and wind, those are items. And there are a bunch of other things that are listed as well. Greenhouses, if they're used for growing, they're not considered structures, they're specialized agricultural equipment under the building code and the real property tax law. So that's something that's a little bit different and we'll talk somewhat about greenhouses. Agriculture is a very long definition, very inclusive, I thought it was very thorough. Animal husbandry excludes fur farms, pig farms, and cage-type poultry houses and CAFOs. All of those things are part of a farm operation in an agricultural district. Cage-type poultry houses, that's where you start to look at interpretation and this is where there may be a rub between what a farmer's doing and what the town code says because you see a lot of, not so much free-range chickens, but they'll be in large movable structures that can be rotated on a daily basis. And that's very important for some people in the way they raise chickens for the health welfare of that bird. CAFOs, that's a large operation. I think they just reduced that, what is it, 799 animals? And medium-sized CAFO is down to 299 animals, up to 798. And we see a lot of those, maybe not in Rhinebeck, but in other places of the state. Pig farms. 11 o'clock last night, I received a text from a neighbor in Green County and it's a case that I'm working on, a sound ag practice review and telling me how horrific the odor is on the pig farm next to him. One of the issues there, the first thing that immediately came to mind after I read that was the weather that we've been having. It's very difficult to get in and clean the manure. The farmer usually does a pretty good job of mopping up the area. They're just individual pens, 14 pens that contains hogs. And it's usually clean, but it's weather. So there are some issues out there. You can't control everything and probably just all the rain that we've had has prevented him from cleaning the pens. Clearcutting, indiscriminate removal of all or most trees is part of the definition in the Rhinebeck Code. And okay for forestry purposes under a forest management plan, but it doesn't say anything about agriculture. We're seeing a lot of trees being removed, large acreages, 10, 20, 30, 40 acres of land where trees are being removed to put land back into production. Extraction operation, I thought this was good here in that for farm operations, there is an exemption as long as you do not need a permit from DEC. The department has worked with a lot of, a number of farmers that needed to remove material to level out an area and they received an exemption from DEC from their mining activity. The definition of farm excludes riding academies, arenas, the raising of fur-bearing animals. Those are all activities that are part of a farm operation under the Agriculture and Markets Law and those are items that we would protect. Farm market allows the sale of local farm products, related farm items open up to year round. That's just a thumbnail sketch of the definition, which is very liberal, I think. Talking about Section 10 disclosure statements, making sure that people are aware that they're in a farm, farming area, maybe subject to noise, odor, dust, traffic, slow-moving traffic, things like that. Principal use, the accessory structure definition, I thought should include principal use because it talks about accessory to a principal building. If you have accessory to a principal use, that would allow farm operations to construct a barn on a separate lot. Public stable, riding academies, again, equine operations are part of a farm operation under the state law. And roadside stand, if you need something more than 200 square feet, which is a pretty small roadside stand. But it is a temporary structure in nature under the town's definition, you would need an area variance. Then we look at fences and gates in Section 125-38. There's a height restriction. Permits are required prior to construction. The Ag and Markets Law guideline, we say farmers should be allowed the full use of their property for fences to the property line. If there's a disagreement as to where the line is located, then a survey should be required. If it's offset off the property line, then a survey should not be required. The preamble for agriculture, there's a section about two and a half pages in the code that deals strictly with agriculture. Farms are encouraged, the intent is not to unreasonably restrict farm operations, the town wants to be consistent with the Agriculture and Markets Law. The farm's operations must employ best management practices and sound agricultural practices. Agriculture is generally entitled to right-to-farm and right-to-market provisions. That's the first time I've seen right-to-market, which I thought was good. Setbacks, we look at different zoning districts, setback requirements, who is there first, the farm or the house? If there's a residence nearby, then the setback is a little bit longer. Also fenced areas for livestock and fowl. We talked a little bit about the fences and manure storage setbacks. 150 feet from any lot line, stream, or water body, 200 feet from the nearest neighboring residence or well. Those are some of the things that we look at, I guess, in concert with Department of Health, that's Appendix 5B. We've incorporated a lot of the Department of Health standards in the department's guideline on manure management and storage. The deeds of residences within 500 feet of a farm operation, that's placed on the deed itself so any subsequent buyer of that property will know that they're in an area where agriculture does occur. There are exemptions in height for fences, structures, barns, silos, and grain bins. No lot line setback on agricultural structures except lots having existing residential buildings. The town recognizes farming as being a Type II action under SEAKER. It doesn't require an environmental review, no site plan approval except when structures exceed 15,000 square feet or the height is above 80. And we talked a little bit about DEC soil removal and management. Every municipality in the state has an opportunity to receive a grant from the department to perform an audit of their zoning law. So if you're looking at ways to make your zoning law farm-friendly, it can be a village or town or county for that matter. Any municipality can request, I think, I don't remember how much it is, you can request up to $25,000 for a farmland protection plan. You can request, maybe it's $6,000 or $7,000 for an audit of the zoning code. And there's very little match to that. It's very low. And so what the department is trying to do is encourage municipalities to look at their local law and how can they make it consistent with the Agriculture and Markets Law. Town, village, county laws should take into consideration agricultural uses in their comprehensive plan. And this was a very important addition to state law and town law, village law, general municipal law. It basically parallels the Agriculture and Markets Law, Section 305A that we're going to talk about next, in that any municipality that adopts or enacts a local law should be consistent with the Agriculture and Markets Law. So your village and town attorneys are very familiar with those segments of the law. Well, 305A imposes an affirmative obligation upon municipalities to enact and administer local laws that are consistent with Article 25AA. local laws that are consistent with Article 25AA. Prohibits governments from unreasonably restricting or regulating farm operations in an agricultural district. And it's very important when we look at unreasonably restrict or regulate. Doesn't mean that you can't restrict or regulate, it's just what is reasonable, what is not unreasonable. We conduct a lot of reviews, probably over 100 a year. And the first thing that I'm always encouraged, when the municipality reaches out and contacts us, a lot of times it's a one-way conversation. We'll send an initial letter to the municipality telling them that we received a request from Farmer Jones to look at the local law and how it affects the farm operation. We ask for public health and safety and really reach out to call us. We send the municipality everything that was sent to us by the farmer. Believe me, I've been on enough operations and received enough of these over the 24 years to know that not everything that I receive from a farmer is 100% correct. So there's a curve there. So you have to find out. We go out and do a review. We conduct a non-farm review. We ask a lot of questions, and we try and find out what is actually really going on here. And so then we want to talk to the municipality. Then we send out a letter looking at the code, saying that this strict interpretation or this enforcement action is unreasonable for these reasons. And we give a very detailed description. And many times it's somewhat daunting when you receive a five-to-eight-page letter from the department talking about all the issues involved, but it's a very thorough review. And it's one that takes some time. If the municipality doesn't contact us, and we're still looking forward, the commissioner can issue a letter saying that we've completed our review. If the municipality continues to take this enforcement action or looks at the review and assert, or enacts, administers the code in a certain way, that's unreasonable on its face, and the department may take legal action. And then on a rare occasion, usually one or two times a year, the department will issue an order to a municipality. And even rarer, we end up in court looking at the issues. So it really doesn't come about that often as far as an order. It's very time-consuming for the limited department staff that we have and our attorneys, but we really want to resolve the situation and talk about the issue and how can we best move forward from where we are.
Bob, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. No, go ahead.
Could you discuss the public health and safety aspects of the Section 305A a bit? Maybe there's some challenge with that. Those issues would come into play in the determination of the situation.
Yeah, that's a pretty tall order because the way the legislature has left it, it says a threat to public health and safety. So if, for instance, in one particular area out in, boy, I think it was Cortland County or Southern Onadaga, where an individual farmer was spreading manure, and there was car stopography, and the rate was higher than what the crops could assimilate, and then it was leaching down into the groundwater, that's a threat to public health and safety. Encroachment upon state wetlands is a threat to public health and safety. We look at state laws, and that's what we use as our benchmark as far as what we measure or how we measure a local law. A local law that's more restrictive than a state law is usually determined to be unreasonably restrictive unless there's an overriding local concern. And that local concern could be protection, wellhead protection. Lot of it has to do, not so much with odor, noise, dust, but it has to do with something that may impact a greater group of individuals.
How about when you get into a more densely populated area like the village? Do you get into the issues of traffic, noise, hours of operation, sort of those types of things?
Yes, and we'll talk about that. That's something that we encourage municipalities to look into through site plan review. And we'll talk a little bit about that. The definition of farm operation is pretty comprehensive, but basically it's the land and on-farm buildings which contribute to the production preparation and marketing of crops, livestock and livestock products. We don't, as a commercial enterprise, so you don't have to meet Ag assessment standard to be a farm operation, but you have to sell. You have to, it has to be more than a hobby. So we look at the IRS rules to separate a hobby from a business, and that's what we try and apply to farm operations, particularly startup farms. Do they have a plan? Do they know what they're going to do? Do they have a market for their crop? Is it something more than just, you know, a backyard garden, and we're going to sell on the road? So roadside stand, so that's what we're looking at. But when we look at the word "marketing" up here, it contributes to marketing. That's wide open. And we don't have a definition as to what is a farm market. The town of Reinbeck has better definitions than we do. They're more comprehensive. And for years, the Marketing Association has tried to develop a definition to have the legislature place into the Agriculture and Markets Law as to what is marketing, but it has failed within the committees, not the legislature, but within the farm marketing groups. So we don't have a good definition for that. So we...
Why has it failed?
There hasn't, there's been disagreement as to, we look at you bringing in, you growing 51% of the products that you sell in the market. Anything that you sell beyond the other 49%, for Ag and Markets to protect you, it has to be like-kind. So if you're selling vegetables, then we're not going to protect you to bring in fruit. But if you sell some fruit, then we'll protect you to bring in other types of fruit, not bananas, but something that's grown in New York to supplement what you sell, to extend your season, and to make more items available. So you might grow 10 different vegetables, but you're going to bring nine more vegetables in from someplace else in New York to sell at your farm stand. Or we see a migration from Pennsylvania to New Jersey to New York with sweet corn, and then moving up in Maine and bringing the sweet corn down to extend the season. But we ask, we try and measure and look to see how many acres of production you have, and is 51% of what you sell is grown by you?
So what's the difference between...
For...
So you said there's disagreement with the fence?
Yes. They don't like the narrow interpretation. Our attorneys have felt that because this is all we have, contribute to marketing without a clear definition, we can't be very strict in, well, liberal in what we allow. Just like the town of Reinbeck, they say that you can bring in product that, for your farm market, that is grown locally. And if it's an agricultural product. Now, I don't know if they allow somebody that's a vegetable farm to bring in maybe milk that's past your eyes down the road, or cheese that's developed locally into the farm market, but we see that a lot. Suffolk County is basically around 60-40, where the 40% could be the Long Island potato chips from Martinside, or it could be a lot of things grown on the island, and they will allow that to occur. But we can't. We don't, under our protections. Yes, ma'am?
Is that by stock, by dollar volume, 51% of?
It can be by, yeah, dollar volume.
Are you talking...
Yeah. Yeah, just some way to keep track of it. We tell the farmer that they have to keep track of what they sell.
Do you want them to keep track of what they sell?
We tell them that they have to. If the town wants to look at it, then they can request it, or if we need to look at it, they need to have, be able to provide to us reasonable assurance that the product is theirs in the amount. I mean, it's a difficult system, and that's one thing that the Marketing Association didn't like. They wanted 30% grown by you, 70% anyplace else brought in. And then what are items usually found at farm markets, and allowing that to occur, sodas, ice cream, a lot of different things that we just don't protect under the Ag and Markets Law. A lot of, yes, sir?
If you grow grape, can you distill it?
Yes.
And have it at farm market, selling alcohol?
Yes. That's part of this. It's coming up. I know you're on the edge of your seat. I thought maybe it was just because you wanted to stretch, but you're in that hard seat. But anyway, we have a lot of different guidance documents because municipalities have wanted to know what's reasonable, what's not reasonable. So we cover a number of areas here. Junk, junkyards, and litter, you know, that's for Ron, our later discussion tonight. But we look at crops grown to support distilleries, breweries, cideries, and wineries. That's a major headache, and I'll tell you now, it's unbelievable, the number of calls I get. But zoning and planning laws, greenhouses, nursery operations, and all the guidance documents are available on the department's website. So this is wineries, breweries, distilleries. Once you develop a venue where you're inviting the public, it's very easy. And you see this with farm markets, too, for individual entrepreneurs and farmers to say, hey, I can make X number of dollars doing this, or I can make XX number of dollars, inviting the public in and trying to get more traffic into our facility. So charitable events, weddings, corporate meetings, tasting rooms, there are a lot of different activities. And depending upon the size of the building will dictate how many people are going to be coming to your operation. So under the Agriculture and Markets Law, you have to be a farm first. You have to process crops that you grow into alcohol. This is where there's a major disconnect. There's a lot of emphasis on farm breweries, farm distilleries, farm wineries, and farm cideries. That's under the, we only look at, are you a farmer first? Are you growing 51% of the crops that you need to process, to produce your alcoholic beverage? And are you growing some of all the major ingredients for that alcoholic beverage? Beer, for instance, grain. So you'll take barley, and you have to send it to a malter, but that's your barley, you're bringing it back. It might not be yours exactly, but if you take 100 pounds to the malter, you're going to get 100 pounds back. Sometimes they mix them. I don't know if they'll do individual batches like that, but you have to show the transfer, you know, that you're actually growing the barley. Then you have to grow hops, too, and maybe some of the flavoring. So if you have a fruit orchard, tree or vines, then that can be added to the beer or pumpkin. So we see that a lot, too. So you have to be a farm first. If you're a farm first and you're growing the crops, then this is part of your production preparation and marketing of crops as a commercial enterprise. Then we look at marketing your crop. In our view, the reason to have a wedding, for instance, is to sell your wine. We see that a lot with wineries, weddings. So that has to be your number-one reason. And a lot of wineries don't like this, and they don't avail themselves of protections under the Agriculture and Markets Law. Because we say that 70% of any income that you make from that wedding has to be from the sale of the wine. So down in the Hudson Valley in particular, we'll see $12,000 to $15,000 rental fee for the facility, and you might have $4,000 or $5,000 in the sale of your wine. Well, that doesn't cut it with us. So you'd have to have $6,000 from the sale of your wine, and then you could have an additional 30% for the rental fee and other charges associated with it. So you're not going to make as much, but we're not going to protect you either. Tasting rooms are a little bit different because that's a direct sale to the public. So if you have a tasting room, and the crop is yours, and the beverage is yours from your crops, then we protect that because it's a direct sale. So municipalities, what are they required to do? Take into consideration the Agriculture and Markets Law. They can require special event permits, special use permits, site plan review. They can look at activities outside of the scope of the Agriculture and Markets Law. And we've had a number of municipalities look at public health and safety associated with hours of operation, traffic, noise, number of events, and egress, ingress, dark skies, and so forth. So there are a lot of things that are under the purview of the planning board. I can send Michael a copy of Casanova in Madison County, the town of Casanova, and there was a winery there. They went through a very exhaustive site plan review process, and they looked at all of these issues here. And we were involved along the periphery of that. And so there was a court case where the winery disagreed with the planning board, and the judge pretty much upheld everything that was in disagreement on behalf of the municipality in their favor. So there's a lot here. So if you have anything like these beverage facilities coming in, there's going to be a lot of work from the planning board and any appeals to the ZBA for this activity. But we see, I'm going to have to move along here really quick, but we see a lot of weddings being advertised, and this is just an online advertisement. We see this quite often where you have a farm that's surrounded by residential subdivision. On the north side, we're dealing with this now. It's a pumpkin festival that he has every year, and the town is trying to require him to set back 150 feet from the property line to grow pumpkins, and that's unreasonable. On this, the bottom portion of the screen, that's the winery. When I was called in about seven years ago, this is what I saw. There's actually netting on the vines, but there were so many birds there that in unison they would hit the net and push it into the grapes, and they would peck the grapes. And as soon as they pecked the grapes, then the bees and wasps would come in, and then they... you had fungus shortly thereafter. I think he had about 5% of his crop that year on 10 acres of vines. He actually spent $40,000 on a rigid wire system so the birds can't go in there. But the reason why I was there was a notice of violation for a propane cannon. And we've looked at the use of the propane cannons as being a sound agricultural practice if they're managed correctly. And he had two of them. One of them was pointed at the complaining neighbor's house. The other one was pointed at the birds, but when that went off, the birds went up, then they came down. It was just like a cartoon. He had all kinds of other things, wide-eyed balloons and owls and hawk calls and stuff. They were so used to it. There were birds right underneath the hawk calls. They could care less. And then they roosted at night in the trees right adjacent to the winery. So that was a party for them. Farm markets, we'll move through this. Agraturism, again, we have all kinds of different things. Farm stays, festivals, corn mazes, CSAs, roadside stands, U-Pick operation. If you can get the public to your farm, you're going to make more money. And farmers are farming to make money, not to lose money. A lot of people do lose money. So this is very important to have direct farm market sales to the public. And again, it's very close to the same as the last slide. 51% of the crops must be grown by the farm, on-farm sales protected. The department protects the construction of farm markets. Also, the legislature added corn maze, hay maze, petting zoos and other agraturism-type activities to the, and slingshots. Well, they'll, they'll take pumpkins and put them in slingshots. Actually, he had a guy that was fairly innovative, and he had one of these cannons that would shoot ears of corn. And you would get three shots for a dollar, and he had it pointed at the complaining neighbor's house, Fred's house. And we told him to point it towards the hill, and he'd be okay. We haven't heard from Fred lately, the neighbor. But he would charge for the, he grew the corn. He'd put it in there. He'd charge a buck for three years of corn. And at the end of the day, he would pick up the corn and feed it to his petting zoo. He had all kinds of animals that would eat the corn. So he did really well there, I thought. And it was all approved by the code enforcement officer, and I don't know, there's some kind of OSHA sticker or something on these things for public use and protection. Again, the municipality looks at public health and safety for farm markets. And parking's very important. We tell farmers that we won't protect them if they park in the road right-of-way. The right-of-way is not meant for parking, that they have to provide adequate parking on their facility or find a way to bring people in, in buses or something like that. So parking is very important. We see a lot of these corn mazes, and this has been agriculture for quite some time. This was Liberty View Farms. And when they first opened up, it was basically 100 acres next to the Housick River, and it was a great money-making venture, but they weren't selling any agricultural products. And so we didn't protect them. This was in the town of Scatico. We told them that if you wanted Ag and Markets protection, you would have to have a reason for people to come to the farm other than the corn maze. So they started to, they opened up quite a farm market, and they started growing a lot of fruits and vegetables there. And the town was very interested in it, and they were one of the early ones, and they were making quite a bit of money off these corn mazes. Agrainment, these are items that I've thought about. Does the building code exempt structures being used by the public? No. And a lot of times, you'll see farmers using their barns for agrainment purposes. Haunted houses is a, is a good one. You can receive variances from the regional code council, but you really need to work with your code enforcement officer. Are the interior roads wide enough to accommodate emergency personnel? If you are preparing food, do you have a health department certificate and approval? And are there handwashing stations and sanitary facilities? If you're serving food, you have to have handwashing stations, and a lot of people don't do that. This is something that is agrainment with a cow train, and it's usually pulled by a tractor or a lawnmower, and your kids are in there. Hopefully, I don't know if I'd put one of my kids in there, but it's a money-making thing, and, but it's not agriculture. It's something the town could allow them to do it, but it's not something that the department would protect under the Ag and Markets Law. Here's an innovative person that has a bounce pillow, a petting zoo. We would protect a slide and a climbing hill. And everything but the petting zoo is not protected under the Agriculture and Markets Law. The municipality may allow it to occur, and there are a lot of health and safety issues and insurance issues for things like this that the town may be, want to become involved. And this is a farm market, and we're starting to see a lot of these. There's probably over 400 of these types of operations in the state where it's almost like an amusement park, where you're paying a per-head person to go in and learn about agriculture and do agricultural activities. This was the individual that headed, had that corn popper pointed towards Fred, and he didn't like that too much. But he expanded into a CSA, community-supported agriculture, where people buy shares and take a portion of the crop that's raised every year. This is a different type of farm market where an individual had 81,000 square feet of greenhouses on Long Island. He would lose his employees every year, needed to find a way to keep the employees year-round, so he started to farm within the greenhouses because the greenhouses were heated. Not only fruits and berries and vegetables, but he also had animals in there, chickens and hogs. So it was quite interesting. I don't know how he's doing, but at least he was doing well enough to borrow $750,000 to build this farm market. And we worked with him because the town was putting him through the wringer on this particular market, but he was his own worst enemy. That was a tent structure in the back, behind the building on the right-hand side. He decided to enclose it without a permit. That handicap accessibility ramp, that wasn't part of the site plan or part of the drawings. He just put it in there. So those things need approvals and to make sure that they meet code, and that's something that he didn't do. So we tried to shepherd this through and have everybody meet in the middle somewhere on that one. I'm going to run through this real quick. Horse boarding operations, $10,000, seven horses, seven acres in production. Protect startup operations. One, one thing I found interesting about, this is in 2005, and then we had the slowing of the economy, but we also are about where we were in 2005, a little bit more, bit larger. We're, we're starting to see equine come back. A lot of people couldn't afford horses. Now we're seeing more horses coming into the state. But back in 2005, $140 million was spent on boarding fees. I thought that was pretty phenomenal. Back about 10 years ago, the nursery industry on Long Island was $144 million. So that's quite a bit of money, especially when you look at the value of all buildings, $7 billion. Equine-related expenditures, almost $1 billion in the state. This is actually Matt Lauer's farm. This is a riding arena on the right-hand side and the stable on the left-hand side. And we became involved in, in this issue based upon the outplantings of vegetation. There was a, a neighbor that was very litigious and well-known in the community, and I think he browbeat the planning board, and they were afraid of lawsuits and stuff, and told the individual that they couldn't have plantings, even though from a veterinarian standpoint, we did a very thorough review, they said that these horses are skittish, they need plantings, they need to break up the landscape. Anybody in this person's backyard could spook the horse, and it would be a danger to the horse and the rider. We had four different letters from four different vets and opinions to support that outcome. This is just, we're starting to see a lot of agricultural buildings like this, horse riding arenas. This is actually considered specialized agricultural equipment under real property tax law, exempt from taxation forever. Under the building code, it's still an assembly building, but the Department of State said that they look at this as a sports arena, and it does not require sprinkler systems. So we have a brand-new code, 2016 is it, Ron? And I'm working with the Department of State on a number of technical bulletins, greenhouses, riding arenas, agricultural structures, property maintenance code. And we're trying to bring it up to 2016 and be ready, you know, before I retire and get that out, so farmers understand what's required and what's not required. And I think one of the more interesting areas that we're looking at, there's a section of the code that talks about tents and membrane structures. And we're, we're trying to look at greenhouses that are used for retail sale to fit within that category of membrane structure, because that will allow 180 days' worth of marketing out of that greenhouse. There are issues associated with that as far as fire code and ingress, egress, things like that. And I think we're going to skip the greenhouses. Let me just, and animal agriculture. This, I have to show you this one. This, this was my pride and joy, is the first letter I ever received from Sally Jesse Raphael. And she lived down the road from this facility, facility and didn't like it. But again, here we have a hard-headed landowner that staked out the building, and it was in a place that the code enforcement officer approved. And then he wanted it, after the code enforcement officer left, he wanted it closer to the road so it would be in line with his other agricultural buildings. So he received a notice of violation because of setbacks. So he went to the ZBA and requested a variance, and they denied the variance. And so you have to exhaust administrative appeals locally. So then we looked at the reasons for the denial of the variance, and they said it was a public health and safety issue because of traffic. It was a small road, and somebody could go off the road. And since this was located less than 100 feet, I think it was 85 feet or so to the road, that there may be an issue. Well, you don't see it up here, but there were, the, the road was lined with 30-inch diameter sugar maple trees. Then there was a, a rock wall that high with an automatic gate, and behind that, he had arborvitae that he planted so it would screen the building. So I don't know. I guess if you were in The DeLorean and Back to the Future, you might have been able to fly over that wall. But we didn't look at it as a public health and safety issue, and we were able to get a permit issued to that individual. This is somebody that has a organic black Angus operation, and this is in the town of North Salem. And she and her husband put together about 120 acres of land that was slated for development in various aspects, and then brought it together and made a really nice farm out of it. And they put up this manure composting facility. I think at that time, the cost was $110,000. They were selling the compost from the beef cows. They'll never make that money back in the lifetime, but there's no way that any leachate is going to be leaving the site. There's actually a drain behind there that collects all of the, the rainwater and everything, and then recycles that back into the first manure pit. It was pretty interesting. But the area here, the reason why we are involved in this particular issue, it was unsafe for trucks to come off the main road onto the farm because of a sharp bend. So there was another road behind the farm where a town official, that's all I'll say, a town official lived and didn't want the trucks coming back and forth along that road. And so we said that their denial of the use of the road was unreasonably restrictive because it was the only safe way to bring trucks in and out on that farm to pick up this manure. So when we look at a summary, a partnership, and that's what I like to tell people, that this is a partnership, it's not a one-way review. Anytime the department's involved, we encourage input from the municipality. We depend a lot upon the municipalities. So we look at, is it a farm operation? Is it in an ag district? We look at the zoning definitions, state law, cost and time associated with the activity to the farmer. Then the town looks at zoning interpretations. Is the law reasonable? Is there a threat to public health and safety? And can site plan mirror the department's suggested site plan for expedited review? So really, it, it's a partnership. If you ever receive a letter from the department, we encourage you to contact us, and we're more than happy to come and talk to you, and if your attorney's there to be present, and we'll bring one of our attorneys with us and, and discuss the issue further. So this is it in a nutshell. It's just a few examples. And it's a pretty interesting area to work in because every day, there's something new and something that surprises me. So that's outside of my kids, you know, that every day, they surprise you. But that's it. Any questions from anybody? Yes, sir?
You say that when someone's given an ag exemption, it's good for eight years. What happens if it's no? He's given the blessing that he's an ag district, and then after further review, he's no more an ag district, and he is a used car salesman, okay? He still has to wait, we still have to wait eight years to bump him out of that?
Well, it depends on when the last review was. So let's say you want to challenge an individual that, that owns land that's in the district. That, that district may be reviewed this year or eight years from now. It depends upon where they are in the cycle. So you would have to know what, when the anniversary date is for the ag districts.
Not that you can't, as, as a person who says it's the right thing to do, say, whoops, I blew it, it's wrong.
Yeah. Yeah.
The guy's good for eight years?
Yes, sir. But that doesn't mean that, as I've said, you know, one of the earlier slides, just to receive a review from the department, you have to be in the ag district, you have to be a farm operation. We don't protect.
I think they probably talk to you about that.
Yeah, we don't protect everything. We protect some things. Yes, sir.
If a place gets done in the ag district, and then they go out of business, the buildings that are put up on that property and setbacks and all that stuff, is that then subject to removal if the operations are removed?
Yeah, the question is the tenure of the land in an agricultural district if the operator leaves and it comes under new ownership. And that remains, that land remains in the agricultural district. It may not be farmed, or it may be converted to a different type of farm.
But if it's not farmed, are those, for instance, if buildings ever put up that didn't need to be permitted, are the grandfathered in at that point?
Well, it depends upon the use. We see this often where you might have a barn, and then the code enforcement officer sees that they're parking a car in the barn. Well, it's no longer an agricultural use. There may be agricultural equipment in that barn, but the code enforcement officer can cite them for using the billing, building for a purpose that it's not intended for, or it wasn't approved for. So the landowner would either have to remove that car or bring that building up to code if they were no longer using it for agricultural purposes and using it as a garage.
But would that sound like a building that was built without any setback or problems?
Well, that, we would only protect the agricultural uses of the building. That's up to the town to determine.
But at that point, the town can then say that that only has to be removed?
It would be a non-conforming use. So if an individual wanted to substantially upgrade that building, they would have to obtain a permit and approval to do that for a building that's a non-conforming use. And then the municipality would say whether or not they're going to allow that to occur, to approve that change.
But it won't be an improvement plan.
Yes, sir. Yeah.
At what point can somebody remove their property from an agricultural district?
Yeah, they can remove property from an agricultural district during the eight-year review.
Anytime during the eight-year review?
Well, there's, I think it's less now. It's a 300-day period where they're going, the municipality's going through the planning process. And they send a questionnaire, or a flyer, or a postcard, or they call each of the farmers to determine, or landowners to determine if they want to keep their land in the agricultural district. Now, there are some municipalities that will send out postcards, and if they don't receive the postcard or the questionnaire back, they remove them from the district automatically. And there are others that they sit around the table, the Farmland Protection Board, and they'll say, well, I know all these areas are still being farmed, I know this landowner, and we should keep them in the ag district. Every county is different. Landowners can determine whether or not they want to remain in the district during that review period, or take their property out of the ag district. There's really no penalty for, it's not a zoning law, so there isn't any penalty for being in the ag district. If you own 50 acres and you're using it for your own recreational pleasure, then you're not going to be protected under the agriculture markets law because it's not part of a farm operation. But it can still be included in the ag district.
So in the village, we have a parcel that became part of the ag district that's full over two acres.
Mm-hmm.
How would we define that as, how you conduct a farming operation on two acres?
Well, it's not on that two acres, it's all the other land that's owned or rented. Part of the farm operation definition says owned or rented contiguous or non-contiguous to one another. So if they own land that's outside of that two acres, then if they're using that two acres for agricultural purposes, that would still be part of the farm. Size doesn't really make a lot of difference. It depends upon how you're using the parcel, and is that your only parcel, or do you have other property contributing to whatever you're doing on that property, that parcel of land? We see a lot of people with farm markets buy land that's on a heavily-traveled road or in a village, and we see that quite often here in Duchess County. There are a number of small parcels in the ag district in Duchess County, as well as on Long Island. On Long Island, we had a guy that had a really nice farm stand and greenhouse, and the town said that you had to own 10 acres of land in that town to be able to market your crops. And he owned over 100 acres of land on Long Island, but not in that town. He only owned the three acres. So we were protecting his ability to keep the market and the greenhouse, and he got so frustrated with the process that he sold it to a winery that was adjacent to him. Then the winery used that as a wine bar and used the greenhouse as part of their wine-making operation, so I don't know. Yes, sir.
Can you say there's no minimum size for a farm?
There isn't, no, sir.
Is there a limit to number of outlets? You may, a farm may have to sell their products. They could have 10 outlets, so we're going to have a number, they could have 10 outlets to sell their products from their contiguous farms, but only takes three of the product.
Well, that's something that we don't look at, no. No, we don't look at that, the profitability. If the land is in the ag district and it's part of their farm operation, and they're selling something off the property, marketing that they grow, then we would protect that.
I'm not clear on the process for your review.
Sure.
Do you wait until the ZBA and the planning board issues a determination before you do a review if you think it might be unreasonable, or you're still complaining that it might be unreasonable? And if an Article 878 is filed, do you wait until it goes to court and then resolve, or do you intervene beforehand and preempt the potential 78%?
Yeah, everything's a little bit different on the department's involvement and how they become involved. If the zoning code says that you can't do something like in Rhinebeck, you can't have hogs, well, on its face, we would look at that as being unreasonably restrictive. And we would immediately enter into a review with the municipality saying that hogs are livestock, this is land in an ag district, and it should be in allowed use, should be a permitted use as of right. But then you have somebody that says, I'm putting up this hog pen, and the town says that since there's a residential building, that I have to set that back 200 feet from their well. And if the well's on the property line, then we would tell them that that's an area variance, that they have to exhaust administrative appeals locally. We would tell them to contact the soil and water conservation district to look at the surface and potential for groundwater contamination, and to request an area variance. If that area variance is denied, then we would look at it and conduct our review if we felt that the planning board, or in that case, the ZBA, was unreasonably restricted, that they didn't have a sound reason for denying the request for moving 200 feet to 100 feet.
What if the issue wasn't soil and water? What if it was being in a residential district that was pre-existing? And the other types of impact in terms of traffic, hours of operation, parking?
Yeah, that's.
All those less tangible.
Well, that's looked at through site plan review, and.
So at what point would ag and markets come to the defense of the farm operator?
Probably if you denied them not having a farm market there, then we would look at the reasons for the denial. If you said that we're only going to approve you to be open five days a week from 4:00 to 9:00 at night, you know, that, then we would look at that, is that reasonable? How much product are they producing? Can they be open longer than that to sell?
So would you, would you, in that case, monitor that they were actually producing 51% of their product?
Yeah, we would ask to, where each one of their products are coming from. Cafes are really problematic in that we want to make sure, are they seasonal? Are they year-round? If they're year-round, where are they going to get the product? If they're selling meat, are they producing that meat? Or eggs? Do they have chickens? Those types of things that we would look at.
How often do you do that monitoring?
Well, this is just at the very beginning. And then, that's why it's important to have site plan review, because if they go beyond their site plan that's been approved, then that would be a violation, that they could come in and they would either have to correct the violation or request modification to the site plan. But it's me and another person half-time that does this for the whole state, and.
Enforcement?
It is at the local level. It's any land use. I mean, you can look at that for residential areas, too, putting up sheds and buildings, and what they're used for, and are they code compliant, those types of things, so.
But there isn't a third party coming into play?
Well, there isn't.
There isn't a third party in this case?
Yeah, we're the third party because of the constitutional amendments. Yeah, they're only, I think they're only, well, there are three now. There were two. One is for low-income housing. That agency has the ability to come in and force an action. The department has the ability to review local rules, regulations, and ordinances. And the State Liquor Authority preempts municipality that they have to have, what is it, they have to have beverage-neutral zoning. And I'm not quite sure what that means, but you can't target breweries, for instance, and say that you can have wineries in the town, but you can't have breweries.
But you could normally target wineries from residential areas in zoning codes, but not if that residential neighborhood is also in an ag district?
Yeah, wineries are a little different animal because under the ABC law, they have to be located on a farm. So when you look at breweries, cideries, and distilleries, they have to be located on a farm or any place that zoning allows, that's approved by the municipality. And I don't know, I really don't know how municipalities are notified when the State Liquor Authority issues a farm, winery, distillery, brewery license to determine.
So somebody has a brewery, can they sell beer that they don't themselves?
Yeah, there was an amendment in the law that allows them to sell up to products from four different people. And that was one of the problems that we were having, that picture I showed you with the birds. And on that property in the town of Huntington, that we protected the winery. So he started to develop wine, then they used the State Liquor Authority law to bring in other people's products. And he had wine and beer and distilled spirits, and his market was converted to an outdoor, I don't know, bar, basically.
So he took advantage of ag and markets to be able.
To get the winery in. But that's where they're selling this stuff, where it's become somewhat of a bar, that's out of our purview. We wouldn't protect that.
But you established the precedent that allowed for that.
Yeah. I guess you can put it on us. Me? No, that's true.
But you're.
Yeah. But that was, that was prior to.
Before, in terms of.
Yeah, that was prior to that law, but since then, it's.
You go through the process in terms of the site plan process, and the operation evolves differently than from what the site plan process says. It puts a tremendous amount of responsibility on the municipality to be able to provide evidence other than that, which is very tangible in terms of direct use violations, in terms of particularly 51%.
Yeah. I mean, that's something that, I don't know if SLA would preempt you, but if you had a site plan that said that you could only sell what you produce, then it would preclude the other beverages coming in. But I don't know if SLA has looked at that. But that would be something to think about.
I just wanted to say thank you very much.
Oh, well, thank you.